Was that your muffler in your back, I heard?
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Due to COVID-19 pandemic, the public is encouraged to wear face masks and social distancing measures have been put in place. Seating is limited. Reminder, before the meeting begins, we ask that you silence your cell phone. Council members, please make sure that your microphones are on. At this time, we will be led in the invocation by Councilmember Scott and the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Askins.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you, dear God, for life, for health, and strength. We thank you, dear God, for land us to be able to come together one more time for the business and the concern for the citizens of Lake City. We pray to have the Father continue to bless us in a mighty special way. And most of all, remember this month is a special month for all the women's, that we celebrate history, women's making history, and we continue to make history here in Lake City. We pray to have the Father who will bless us in the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council members?
Councilmember Rich Hook?
Present.
Mayor Portim and toll secretary?
Present.
Councilmember Slaughter, women's privacy?
Present.
Councilmember Eunice O'Robinson?
Present.
Councilmember Willamia Scott?
Present.
And Councilmember William Askin?
Present.
Mayor Anderson, I find there to be a form present.
Thank you. At this time, we need a motion to adopt the agenda's printed.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Properly moved and second. All those in favor, bow show of hands. Next item is the approval of minutes. Approval of the minutes from Tuesday, February 8th, 2022, regular city council meeting.
Move to approve?
Second.
Properly moved and second. All those in favor, bow show of hands. Next item on the list is presentation.
Mayor and council, good evening. Tonight, we have a presentation by our auditors for our fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021, and y'all familiar with her, she's been here before, Ms. Emily Sobchak from Green City.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Again, my name is Emily Sobchak, I am the auditor for Green City. I've been overseeing the city's financial audit several years now, and again, I'm here tonight to present the results of the fiscal 2021 financial audit. So before we get into...
There we go.
Before we get into the financial results for the year, we always think it's important to remind you of the city's responsibility when it comes to your financial statements. The city is responsible for the numbers and the disclosures included in those financials, and the city management and staff are responsible for ensuring that that financial information at year end for audit purposes, as well as throughout the year for your strategic decision-making purposes, is complete, accurate, and reliable. And the way that we ensure that is by having good policies and procedures in place to mitigate the risk of misstatement. And we do like to remind you that it's important to do a regular risk assessment, at least annually, to assess the risks that the city is facing and make sure that policies and procedures are adjusted as needed to better mitigate those risks. Our responsibility as your auditor is to audit the financial information provided and issue an opinion based on our audit. We did issue an unmodified opinion this year, and as you'll recall, that is a clean opinion. That's the opinion that you want to receive. That opinion provides reasonable assurance that the financial statements are materially correct. So, important to note there that a financial statement audit does not involve us looking at every single transaction that occurred during the year, rather, we're using some professional judgment in determining which transactions we review. So now getting into your general fund results, you had an increase in fund balance of $237,000, bringing total general fund fund balance to $2.5 million as of June 30th, 2021. Included in that two and a half million was non-spendable fund balance of $58,000, so that represents things like prepaid assets and inventory, amounts that have already been spent but that will be consumed in future years. You also have restricted fund balance of $149,000, so that's restricted by third parties for things like victim services or state restrictions on tourism-related revenues. And then you have committed fund balance of $668,000. These are committed by council. That includes commitments for future capital improvements, as well as for sanitation and car replacement. So when we take those amounts out that are already restricted or committed for other purposes, we're left with unassigned fund balance of $1.6 million, or about 23% of your fiscal 2021 operating expenditures. Now, as we talked about last year, the Government Finance Officers Association recommends a minimum of two months, or about 17% of your operating expenditures, to be maintained in your unassigned fund balance. And as you see in that graph there, the city's done a great job in really improving the financial position of the general fund. And part of that relates to a new policy that y'all adopted during fiscal '21 to make sure that you're keeping that fund, that unassigned fund balance in a healthy position. There are a number of reasons why that is important for the city. One is for cash flow purposes, so we're measuring fund balance as of June 30th, but as we know, your property tax revenues, which are the most significant revenue source for your general fund, don't start coming in until late December or early January. And so you've got about six months of cash flows that you need to get through before those property tax revenues start coming in, and having a healthy fund balance available allows you to meet those cash flow needs without having to issue short-term financing. It also allows you more flexibility for future discretionary funding, and it will help you get better interest rates should you issue long-term debt in the future. So how did we get to that increase in fund balance? Well, we had general fund revenues of $6.5 million. That was an increase of about 10% compared to your budget, or about 4% increase compared to the prior year. You were better than budget primarily in your local option sales tax revenues, as those really increased for fiscal '21. And you were also better than budget in your grant revenues. Uh-oh. Don't know what happened to my graph there, but on the expenditure side, we had $7.1 million. That was, again, about 10% higher than what you had budgeted, but that was primarily driven by your capital outlay related to bringing your sanitation, or I'm sorry, your waste management function in-house. And so because you brought that function in-house, you decided to purchase the dump truck, or garbage trucks. And so that resulted in additional capital outlay that wasn't included in the initial approved budget. And so expenditures were 15% higher than the prior year, and again, that's primarily related to the additional capital outlay. Now looking at your enterprise funds, remember, these funds are reported a little bit differently from your governmental funds. These funds are reported more like a business, on a full accrual basis. So in addition to looking at current assets and liabilities, like we do with your governmental funds, these funds also report long-term assets and obligations. And so the water fund had a net position of $7.6 million as of year end. That was a decrease from the prior year of about $465,000. Now, it's important to remember that because we are reporting capital assets in these funds, that $7.6 million in net position is, only part of that is liquid. $6.5 million of that amount represents your investment in your capital assets. The total water fund revenues increased by about $182,000, or 13%, and that was primarily driven by increased consumption during the year. On your sewer fund, you had an increase in net position of $1.6 million, bringing the sewer fund net position to $12.1 million as of year end. Again, $9.7 million of that is, represents your investment in your capital assets, or restricted debt for debt service. And so, again, with these utility funds, it's important to remember that they are highly dependent on very expensive utility infrastructure. And so that infrastructure, while it is reported as an asset, a long-term asset, you know, we know that with that infrastructure comes repairs, maintenance, replacement over the years, that can be quite costly. And so it's important that the city has a good capital improvement plan in place so that you know how you're going to manage those future costs. So looking at total capital assets for the city, so your utility assets, as well as your general government assets, you had $34.5 million as of year end. That was an increase from the prior year, as your additions exceeded current year depreciation expense. The most significant additions during the current year were those, your sewer fund forced main improvements. On the other side, your long-term obligations were $10.8 million as of year end. That was a decrease from the prior year, as your current year principal payments exceeded new debt issuances. The only new obligation that was issued during the year was the capital lease for $525,000. So two other obligations that we report are your net pension and net OPEB liabilities. We've talked about these for several years now, and they are similar in that they both represent actuarial liabilities, so they are estimates. The net pension liability relates to your participation in the state retirement system. And so that liability, it's a big number, $7.1 million, but it's a number that, number one, again, is an estimate. Number two, the city has no control over that number. That represents your proportionate share of the total unfunded actuarial liability of the retirement system. And so what the city is responsible for is to continue making the required employer contributions at the state mandated rates. And as we've discussed pretty much every year I've been up here, those rates are increasing. They were frozen for fiscal '21 due to the pandemic, but those rate increases have continued for fiscal '22. The rates of 15.5% and 18.2% for fiscal '21 have risen to 16.5% and 19.2% for fiscal '22, and they will continue to increase by 1% annually through fiscal '24. And so the reason why that's so important to remember is because those have a direct impact on your operating budgets. And so it's critical that you take those into account when you're budgeting, when you're thinking of future years' budgets, and when you're making personnel decisions. So the net OPEB liability is a little bit different in that it relates to your, the city's own retiree healthcare plan. And so this plan, city council does have full authority to amend the terms and the benefits of the plan. So for fiscal '21, we were, we were required to implement one new accounting standard. That was GASB number 84, which provided new guidance for fiduciary activities. So what that meant for the city is that the firefighters' 1% fund, which previously was reported as a fiduciary fund for fiscal '21, is now reported as a special revenue fund. So merely geography in your report, it did result in an increase in your opening fund balance of about $20,000, and so it will continue to be reported in that manner going forward. For fiscal '22, we'll be implementing GASB number 87, which provides some new guidance on leases. And so we're still in the process of determining what, if any, effect that will have on your fiscal '22 financial statements. So in any fiscal year where your federal expenditures exceed $750,000, the federal government requires you to have an additional compliance audit in addition to your financial statement audit. That's often referred to as the single audit. And so that was required for fiscal '21, and we looked at the EDA grant, and as you'll recall, that grant was used to fund the forced main improvements. And I'm pleased to say we have no findings noted related to that grant. And so, you know, we always like to remind you that federal dollars, any grant dollars, really, come with a lot of strings attached, lots of compliance requirements, so they can be a little bit tricky to navigate. And so really excellent job in your handling of those grant funds for the year. We also issue, in addition to the financial report, we issue a management letter each year, and from time to time, we will have written recommendations included in that letter. As I mentioned earlier, last year, we had a recommendation related to the general fund fund balance. That was addressed by council and management during fiscal '21, so we appreciate that. We love knowing that you're listening and taking our advice into account, no matters to report this year. I think, you know, as we talked about last year, you know, management and with council's help, y'all have really made significant improvements in your processes and procedures in the way that duties are segregated and the way that the finance, finances of the city are handled. Over the past several years, huge strides have been made, so really kudos to William and to his team. They really work hard and it shows, so we appreciate them, as I know that y'all do too. So that's, that's what I've got for y'all this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions. If there was anything that I didn't cover that you'd like me to touch on, I'm happy to do that now.
Question?
If I may inject here, in the past, the city at year end was processing a lot of journal entries. This past year, we processed one journal entry, and it was pertaining to retirement, the OPEB, which was an analysis that was done by a third party that came in after the fact. And the year before that, it was likely a nine, nine journal entries at year end. So basically, we've gone from prior years where we had multiple pages of journal entries to where we're now down to up-to-date with our business.
Yeah, yeah, because I think two, even two years ago, it was much more than nine. So yeah, again, like I said, huge strides and, yeah, great, great financial position.
And if Glenn, Rhonda, and Adrian would stand up, I would like to give their due diligence and point out that these are the people that were here, and give them a round of applause for what they've done for the financial department. Adrian, Glenn, and Rhonda, highly appreciated. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Thanks for being a bearer of good news.
At this time, we read our public comment period. Notes on the comment period. Why Jonathan's getting there, I'll talk loud enough. That's all.
There you go.
Notes on comment period. Comments are limited to two minutes per person, and no personal or verbal attacks will be entertained. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but speakers should not expect council action or deliberation on subject matters brought during the public comment period. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the city administration and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Please make sure to sign in and leave your name and address for the record with the city clerk, the council. Floor is open. Okay. If no comments are at this period, we can move on to our next section, legislative.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'd like to present to you for your consideration ordinance number 2022.002, second and final reading, an ordinance for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, for the approval to enter into a mutual aid agreement with the city of King Street Police Department and the city of Lake City Police Department, South Carolina, and all, all matters related thereto.
Thank you. The floor is now open for a motion to approve ordinance 2022.002 for second and final reading.
Move to approve?
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. Questions?
William, do you mind explaining to the public what this actually means?
Chief, Chief Cooper, if you would speak on this for Councilmember Robinson, get it firsthand, what this means when we give assistance to the city of King Street.
The short version of it is, the mutual aid agreement between Lake City Police Department, King Street Police Department, will allow us to bridge the gaps between what we do every day in the law enforcement capacity, whether it be investigations, assisting with someone being lost, or just providing extra assistance. It allows us to cross over jurisdictional lines and boundary lines in our municipality that we can actually help our neighboring law enforcement agency. It in no way, shape, or form gives them authority over Lake City, nor we over them. It just joins in a mutual aid to assist each other.
And would you also speak on it? Does not take away from the protection we give our community?
No, it does not. And it, actually, it adds additional protection because where we're short, where we may need some more assistance from another agency like King Street Police, we can actually call on them, and they do not have to worry about or have the headache of being, I guess, painted into a corner legalized, because we have an agreement that they can be over here, we can be over there and assisting them at both sides, so it doesn't take away, it actually adds to. So it's an asset more than a liability.
And they do get compensated for it?
That money, there's no money that it changed, that it exchanged hands. The salaries are the same, there's nothing monetary involved. It's just a matter of saying that we're going to help you, and you're going to help us, and we put it in writing.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
All right, mayor and council, for your consideration, ordinance number 2022.003, second and final reading, an ordinance for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval of rezoning property located at 208 West Cole Road, tax map number 00169-31-258, consisting of 9.42 acres belonging to Science Limited of Lake City, South Carolina, and all matters related thereto.
Thank you. The floor is now open for a motion to approve ordinance 2022.003 for second and final reading.
Move to approve ordinance 2022.003, second reading and final.
Properly moved and second. Question or discussion?
I have a question. I asked it in the last meeting. He said it belongs to Science Unlimited, but is, who owns Science Unlimited?
What's the gentleman's name?
Kenny?
Kenny Salz.
Okay, isn't he employed, is he still employed by the city?
He's not a full-time employee, to my understanding. When I inquired, he is a volunteer, as needed, in case we have a fire, a major fire, and we need to call volunteers up.
Okay, so would that not constitute a conflict of interest, even though he is
Charlie?
A volunteer? Yeah, because I wouldn't want there to be a true conflict, even though he's not here, but with him, even though he's not on the payroll, but he still has, to an extent, a vested interest, interest in the city by volunteering?
Thank you, Charlie. Mayor and council, for your consideration, ordinance number 2022.004, second and final reading, an ordinance for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, for the approval of rezoning property located at 278 West Cole Road, tax map number 00169-31-271, belonging to the city of Lake City, South Carolina, and all matters related thereto.
Floor is now open for a motion to approve ordinance 2022.004 for second and final reading.
Move to approve?
Second.
Been properly moved and second. Any questions? If none, all is in favor, bow show of hands. Next item.
Mayor and council, resolution number for your consideration is 2022.017, which is the final reading, a resolution for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval of additional funding to the capital improvement line items for the approval of ordinance number 2021.559 on June 8th, 2021. Ordinance number 2021.559 was approved for the establishment of a municipal budget and all matters related thereto. The basis of this request is, we started out with an approval from you to purchase Dodge Chargers for the police department. Those Dodge Chargers was approved at $101,340, with 85, $8, $8,500, about $34,000 worth of upgrades on them. Those Dodge Chargers, we found out, are not available. Then I made a phone call and talked with each of you to let you know that, and said we were going into the Dodge Durango, which increased the price to $144,648 for the Dodge Durangos. That's four of them, with about a $34,000 outfit on those items, where we found out that those cars are no longer going to be produced.
We have Lambos now?
So everyone knows the economic environment we have and what's going on in the world today, so we now are on a list with your approval to purchase four Ford police interceptors. But with every time we've done this, the price goes up. Those four interceptors are now at $152,188.
For the four?
For four. Now, with Airbnb being already in March, July is right around the corner, and we don't even know if we're going to get these four, but we can get on a list, we want to go ahead and get on the list for two more while they're offering them up. So that would bring us to a total of about $279,000 to get all six and outfit them.
Two hundred and what now?
Two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, $282 to, for the cars and the outfit side.
Okay.
And that's still no guarantee we're going to get them.
Is that in our paperwork? I'm so sorry, I'm not seeing it.
Well, the, the, the cars are in the paperwork, but we've already approved the, the outfit on the budgeting.
No, I'm saying the amount. I guess I'm looking at a different amount.
Yes, they're on the ordinance, the resolution. They're on the ordinance, the resolution. The original 152,188 and two additional for 76,000. You have this sheet right here, page number.
And that'll be a total of 228?
Yeah, that's 228. And by the time we outfit them, it'll bring it to 279.
Okay.
But we've already pre-approved upfitting for four.
Okay.
But the whole package for the six would be 279,282. And that's if we can get them.
Move to approve.
Properly moved and second. Any more questions or discussion? None, all is in favor? Show of hands.
Mayor and council, we have the financial reports. Page 23, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, page 32. These are your financial reports for issuing up by March 3rd, 2022. The revenues in the general fund, we brought in 5 million, 197, 334. That's 69% of the budget. We had expenditures of 5 million, 367, 590, 71% of the budget. So we overspent by 170,256 for that period. In the water fund, we brought in 1 million, 102, 068. That's 70% of the budget. We had expenditures in the water fund of 1 million, 40,766. That's 66% of the budget. That was a surplus of revenue of 61,302. In the sewer fund, we brought in revenue of 2 million, 76,769. That's 71% of the budget. We had expenditures of 2 million, 143, 833, 74% of the budget. We overspent our revenue by 67,064. During this period of time, we should be running about 66% of our budget. And I will say that we had some lines that we had to fix in the sewer department. So that's why we had excess in expenditures. So this is our financial statement for you for this period of time. The next item I have for your review is the bills, bill list for March 8th, 2022, for your consideration and approval to pay. Bills number one through seven is printed on your sheet in your pack. Probably the last page in your pack.
Floor is now open for a motion to approve bills for March 8th, 2022, items one through seven.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, mayor and council, to give you information, probably when y'all pulled up, you saw a big truck sitting out here on the right. That's our sludge. That's our horse truck. It finally got here. We're in the process of getting it tagged, entitled in the state of South Carolina. We're also in the process of getting the sludge tested and make sure it is acceptable at Lee County Landfill. That's been done. They're ready to accept our sludge. We're working out, in canceling the two-year contract, Amy had to pull the paper. We were informed that Stephanie signed a three-year contract. So we do not come out of that contract for another nine months. But after Amy realizes, we're trying to, and I've worked with her and talked with her in depth, and we're trying to cut our costs, she's agreed to work with us. And it might be a good thing while we get used to the process, they will pick up once a week. And that will be, that will give them what they need for us to honor our contract. And then we'll pick up the rest from there. So for the next nine months, they're going to come once a week. And then, once we get closer to the end, she may even get us relief on that. So we're going to work through this together and move forward. So we are actually in the process of starting to haul our own sludge. Hopefully, we'll do that within the next two weeks. The tags should be, I don't want to send a truck up the interstate to Lee County until we get our actual tags on it. I don't want paper tags running up and down. That's a toxic material. We're going to make sure we have a driver's, a CDL with a class license to drive that up the interstate. Because at any time, you know, we can always have an accident. We hope not. But we just need to make sure we do the best we can to prevent that. Because that's toxic material we're hauling to Lee County. So just to let you know that that is here and we are now working to get that on the road for the city of Lake City. And that's all I have for you. And Chief Cooper has his update for the police department.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
Citizens of Lake City. Give you guys a copy of this. These are our stats for February. Here, if you guys take a look at it. I charted into this.
Thank you.
She's not one of them. Yeah. So as looking at the stats for this month, or at least for February, looking at totals on calls for service is 741. And I'm hitting the highlights of all the higher numbers here. Traffic stops, we're looking at 163 traffic stops were conducted. Burglary alarms, 72. Whether it be actual burglary alarms, which we did not have any actual burglary alarms, it's just the alarms itself going off, being activated. So we had 72 for the month. Domestic calls for the month of February, we're at 43. Disorderly conduct, we're looking at 27. We had 19 vehicle collisions, accident we investigated. We had 11 missing persons reports filed, to which they were returned home. Anytime someone calls for a missing person, we actually do the report. We don't wait to give it that old proverbial timeframe, they must be gone in this timeframe. We, you know, we go ahead and just do the report. Because you never know what a person's going through. You never know what's in a person's life and their family's, what they have going. So we just go ahead and do the report. So we had 11 of those filed. Warrant service, we had 15 warrants, 11 assaults, 13 larcenies, which is thefts, petty thefts. Shootings, we had 14 shootings, calls of shootings. Now, the 14 calls of shootings comes at individuals just calling, saying that they heard gunshots. It could be in the city, it could be in the county, because those sounds, they reverberate way out into God's knows where. So the calls that we had, some were actual shootings and some weren't. The ones that were, that we can actually investigate, we actually made reports on and arrests. When I think off the top of my head, it was four individuals that we arrested, the shootings. That we actually, witnesses say they saw them. We were actually able to generate a report and investigate and actually arrest those individuals. Now, it's like I said before, out of those four, I want to think that three of them were already, had monitors on. So they were already out on bond, those three individuals. So, but at the end of the day, we still investigate them. So like I said, from the city to the county, we're doing both of them. We assist them and they assist us. Citations issued, we're talking about 106. So we were very proactive with traffic in the month of February. 19 incidents with arrests that were made, 37 warrants served, well, were issued, 27 of them were served. And at the bottom of the sheet, there's a breakdown of actually the demographics of black males, black females, juveniles, and Hispanic males. You have any questions about those stats? Uniform traffic tickets. Yeah. It could be anything from just a citation, some people call it a warning ticket. But the state of South Carolina suggests that when we stop a vehicle, actually it's mandated when we stop a vehicle, we must give you a courtesy sum saying we stopped the vehicle because of statistical information that they pull from that data. So they're like, we're trying to profile individuals. So everybody we stop, it gives them their, pretty much their names, but most of their age, their ethnicity, it breaks it down like that for the state. So it keeps us on the same curve, excuse me. Also, despite the shooting, a bit of good news, we've had, from February 17th, the Lake City Police Department is pleased to announce, we have an actual Girl Scout troop now. So our Girl Scout troop is troop number 2722. And this goes in line with our youth intervention program.
Thank you.
Now, with our Girl Scout troops, it's going to be headed up by Youth Intervention Coordinator, Ms. Ashley Page and Ms. Chelsea Rice. And there are, the mandates are for these Girl Scouts, the requirements. What we're looking at is from grades two to 12, and the age range from eight to 18. So they're going to be meeting here, once they get the schedule done. Actually, they're sitting in communications right now. They're in an online virtual class right now for Girl Scouts getting some more training. Ms. Ashley Page has actually had several years as being a Girl Scout. Ms. Chelsea Rice has been doing it for a little while, but she wants to learn a little bit more. So they're actually taking on their role, but they do accept volunteers. So if anybody wants to step up, with this thing is actually announced, we'd love to have you, you know, and help us out with the kids, especially, you know, the young ladies and stuff. And we're working on the boys, Boy Scouts. We're working on those now. So we've submitted the paperwork, we're just waiting for them to give us our stamp, saying that we're good to go. So we're actually doing things as far as the youth and trying to get them involved. And as of right now, with the exception of March 30th, which we'll be doing a career fair, a law enforcement PD career fair, we're moving right along with the police department. Things are kind of slow and we get that. And, you know, and I want to take this time to thank everyone about the monies for the vehicle. It comes to no surprise about the vehicles and how short we are for our staff, personnel, and vehicles. Everyone is in this crunch. The last purchase order we tried to make for the vehicles that the council so gracious enough to approve, the Chrysler Corporation council order, it was nothing to do with the vendor. The company did. So everyone is in a crunch right now. And we're just hurting for vehicles. It was individuals, was police officers, not his vehicles. And so we're trying to stay with what the state mandate as far as a reputable vendor and also at the state price, but sometimes we have to go outside of that because they just don't offer anything, they don't have anything. But I do thank council, and my officers do too, because we definitely, we're not in dire need in the sense of, we have people on foot patrol walking without a car. Everyone has a patrol vehicle, everyone has an assigned vehicle. And we're lucky enough to have a spare vehicle that's just that, a spare vehicle. So these guys are actually taking care of what we have. And going forward, we just have to remind ourselves, we do not need to wait till the dire hour to start ordering vehicles. They need to be on some kind of rotation. Because if we get to this point again, it's going to hurt later on, because it's getting worse and worse. As this thing worsens with the pandemic, as this issue worsens with the Ukraine and the war and stuff, it's getting bad. So as we move forward, I hope one day that, once we have this conversation again, at a later date, we can move forward to some type of rotation, if it's just one or two a budget year. We don't, we don't need for them to get this low again.
Chief, let me ask you a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know what would really constitute or determine horses or vehicles, I mean, horses or motorcycles. What would necessitate a need for that?
For the vehicles?
For horses or motorcycles.
I don't understand the question, what you mean?
You know, some cities have horses and motorcycles.
Right, they do, they do. I think, for real, I don't think.
I'm just curious.
I think for horses, more so, when I was employed with the city of Columbia, we had mounted patrol. And they'd get horseback downtown in certain communities within the city of Columbia. There was a need for it because some areas, cars are really not advantageous for the police department to be going in and out of. Horses are present. Horses make a big statement when you're actually out there doing patrol. And they use them a lot for crowd control also. That is a big out. And not only that, cars probably last four or five years, horses for 20. So I'm just saying. But they make a statement also, but they do more than just patrol, you know, and they are police officers too. So they're very well trained.
We have Jack Smiths in town.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. But I hope we won't get to horses, though. We do have a few bicycles, we can do bike, you know, mounted bike patrol, though.
Might want to consider that.
Ms. Crowe, that was a joke. But that's where we at, though. But I do, again, I appreciate it, my officers do appreciate what you guys are doing and trying to help us out. It's just a tough time right now, but we're going to work through it.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, that's all we have for you to say. Thank you so much.
At this time, we give the motion to go into executive session pursuant to the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, Section 30-4-70A1, for the discussion of personnel employment, compensation, or appointment, and other matters related thereto.
Move to approve.
Trophy moves in second. All in favor, by show of hands. Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands.
And there was no business taking care of doing executive session that we have to come out now and take a vote on. Um- Motion to come out of executive session?
Second.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval. This is a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the appointment of the city administrator and other matter related thereto who is before us, William Hall.
No, I approve.
Need a motion to approve?
No, I approve.
Properly moved and second, all those in favor by a show of hands. All right, next item is Resolution two zero two two point zero one eight for approval.